Good evening, Brian Barrett here.
Hi Brian, we'll get started in just about a minute here.
Good, alright.
Good evening, it is six o'clock PM, this is the regular business meeting, the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much, members present, myself Chairman Jake Pride, Vice Chair Robert Loveenheim, via Zoom Supervisor Brian Barrett, our Township Manager Julia Heilica, Solicitor Ron Karasak, and our Engineer John Tressler, we're also joined by Brian from Berry Isid, who is here to talk with us about Marshall's Falls, but first, we have announcements. This evening's conditional use hearing for Black Buffalo, their 3D, Black Buffalo 3D floodplain conditional use hearing is canceled, we'll get into that in a moment, but before that, we are going to consider sets of minutes from September 28th, October 12th, and two sets from October 12th. Do I hear a motion on those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve all three sets of minutes.
Motion by, second, second by Mr. Barrett, any question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Ron, would you like to discuss the correspondence received from Black Buffalo 3D with regard to the cancellation of this hearing?
Yes, may it, please the supervisor, I received a letter from Attorney Richard Williams, who is the attorney for Black Buffalo, in both the conditional use hearing and the land development matter. Now, the land development matter is not on for you, however, the conditional use hearing was scheduled for this evening and was advertised as such, Mr. Williams sent a letter asking that the matter be removed from the hearing for this evening, and that they will advise as to when they would like the matter rescheduled. They have waived all of the time limits under the Municipalities Planning Code with respect to the 60-day hearing, and 45 days, 100 days, all those things. And that also indicated that when the matter will be rescheduled, that his client will pay for the advertising and related costs, so that the township doesn't incur an additional cost, which it already has for the advertising in this matter, so that being said, the matter should be off the agenda for this evening, not even table, take it off and bill somehow ordered back on or replaced back on by the applicant.
Okay, so that means there's no action required and none would be appropriate then? So that said, we will await until we hear them, I don't think, I don't think there's anything else left to do, so thanks Ron.
And if I can, to share, also for the land development plan, again, it's not on this agenda, but they did file a written extension, I believe through mid, mid-February or so, so that matters.
February 9th.
February 9th, so although that continued on the planning commission agenda, I'm not sure how much action they would need to take, since we're not quite sure what's happening, so.
Right, understood, that said, we have no plans to act on this evening. Ron, would you like to note anything for a solicitor's report?
The only thing I would want to note is that I would like a brief executive session with respect to the lawsuit that is pending in Monroe County Court between the township auditors and township supervisors, and also, I wanted to bring to your attention of the township that I got a call from the applicant or applicant's engineer regarding the Shawnee Inc. conditional use decision that I had prepared and sent out. He indicated that he thought the motion was that the 15-ton weight limit would be okay, even though John is preferring the 10, 10-ton, and I wrote the opinion on the basis of the 10-ton. The fellow called me and said, if you look at the transcript, or he said, if you look at the transcript, if you check your notes, you'll see that it was approved at the 15 tons, and from what I'm seeing here, that's what it was like, you know, so, you know, Mr. Tressler here on page 30 said, so in summary, I have no problem with the 15-ton limit, if that is what the boards wish. Mr. Pride, do you have any other recommended conditions? Mr. Tressler, I do not, Mr. Pride, that said, do I hear a motion to grant the conditional use application, with the provision that it is acceptable by the board standards to have the weight limit posted at 15 tons? Mr. Loveenheim made the motion, Mr. Pride second, and then there was not completely clear as to vote, and that's why mine is a little shady, but that being said, I think unless the board tells me otherwise, I need to do a brief amendment to that decision to include the 15-ton weight limit as opposed to 10.
I think it was unanimous.
Yeah, and since it, you know, was apparently an error that I made, I will not charge the township for that change or that amendment, so that will need to be done, and other than that, I prepared with the help of our very competent township manager, the resolution for the municipal curative amendment, which I guess we'll get to later, and also the resolution with respect to the new collection. So we'll, we'll all address those further on under new businesses and details.
Sure.
Other than that, I have nothing else to share.
Thank you, John, anything to note?
I have nothing outside of the addenda items.
Great, then our next order of business is the consideration for the consent agenda, which is some routine tasks, I will delineate that the advertisements that are being authorized there are just so, we have the authorization when we're ready to go, they are not authorizing anything that is complete at the moment, except for the reorganization meetings in January. So do we hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Loveenheim, any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So the next item under new business would have been the conditional use hearing, but that is struck from the agenda as we do not have a hearing to be had now. Next is the consideration, go ahead Brian.
Yeah, I'm sorry Jacob, and we'll wait to hear from them, I think you said, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct Brian, hopefully you can hear me, they said that they'll let us know when they want the matter rescheduled. They have not given me as to that, but that's what it says, and they also said that when it gets rescheduled, that they will pay and reimburse the township for the advertising and other costs that have already been incurred, had the meeting, had the hearing occurred this evening.
Got it, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Perfect, next is the consideration for resolution number 509, the intermunicipal agreement with Delaware Water Gap. Ron, do you want to detail how you work together with Solicitor Huffman?
Yes, I had worked with, again, the township manager, and also with this attorney, I'm sorry Deborah Huffman, who is the attorney for Delaware Water Gap with respect to this matter. As I indicated at the last hearing, a resolution had to be prepared by both the township and the Borough of Delaware Water Gap to approve of this lead collection by the township, and there also needed to be an intergovernmental agreement that was approved. So before you, with resolution number 509, that allows the township to pick up the leads for Delaware Water Gap, it indicates based upon the information to which I was provided that this pickup shall be done by Smithfield Township using its vehicles and its employees, and this lead collection would be free of charge to the borough, and will occur whether permitting between the times of October 24 and November 23 of each calendar year. And also, it indicates that this matter shall be considered through an intergovernmental agreement, which is attached as a copy to the resolution, so that being said, unless there's any questions regarding this matter.
Right, Brian, each year we, we address this, correct?
That is correct Brian, under the intergovernmental agreement that was prepared, numbered, and I've asked this to be added, so this was added, basically Attorney Huffman prepared the agreement, and the term says that this agreement will automatically renew on an annual basis, unless either party notifies the other in writing at least 90 days prior to October 24 of the next year of its intention to terminate and not renew the agreement. So it will automatically review unless either the township or Delaware Water Gap within that 90-day window say, no, we're not going to renew it.
Oh, okay, alright.
So again, if the township is considering not wanting to renew it for the following year, they need to keep an eye out on the calendar to make sure that the notice goes out within that 90-day window.
I'm guessing other, other services we have, landscape and everything else, every year we address it, we take a look, and we refit it, and, well, anyway, I don't.
Yeah, the fact that it says it automatically renews just means that it renews if either party does not want to take a look at it again, so if the township wants to take a look at this again, all you do is within 90 days prior to October 24, say that the agreement's over, we're going to relook at it, and then we'll be back in touch if we want to renew it.
Got it, I'd rather, I'd rather it be very simply that we have to take a look at it.
You, you, we can do that too, the agreement, again, was prepared by Attorney Huffman, and that provision was added by me, if you'd rather say that the agreement shall automatically terminate at the end of each year unless extended by the parties, that certainly could be made a condition if in fact the board wants to.
If it makes Brian feel more comfortable, I have no problem with that.
Thanks Jake.
At least it takes the responsibility off us, I know.
Oh yeah, I mean, it's, it's a fair thing, it allows renewal and discussion each time, it's probably better to do it that way, so.
I hate those magazines where it says, it'll automatically renew unless you tell us that it's terminated. I, I, I agree with Brian.
Okay, all right, that said, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution with that provision as an addendum to the intermunicipal agreement?
I'll make the.
Yes, I'll make it, I'll take of it.
Motion by Mr. Loveenheim, second by Mr. Barrett, any question? It will be posted on our website, yep. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Next is resolution number 510, which invokes section 609.2 of the Municipalities Planning Code. Ron, prepare this in accordance with our discussion at our last meeting with regard to invalidities in our zoning ordinance relative to warehousing and solar. Ron, would you like to give us a quick overview of that?
Sure, your last meeting, which I believe was, not maybe the last meeting, but the last time this was addressed, I believe was at your September 28 meeting, and at that time, it was determined that the township zoning ordinance is deficient with respect to some areas, and the deficiency deals, number one, with warehousing, warehousing does not have any, any parameters or performance standard within the zoning ordinance as to, is it a warehouse for storage? Is it a warehouse for distribution? What about the size of it? What about infrastructure? What about environmental effects? The only thing that the zoning ordinance defines as a warehouse is simply the building used primarily for the storage of equipment, goods, and materials. So that being said, the township was of the opinion that that definition and the other things that were just discussed need to be addressed by the township through changing the zoning ordinance, and the second item was that the township zoning ordinance had no regulations at all, and no definitions for any solar energy, such as solar fields, solar farms, solar panels, solar energy businesses, so again, the feeling was there has to be some type of definition and use and use classes for those types of uses, and then finally, the decision was going to be made, or at least determined that it should be clarified as to whether or not, whether it's solar items or warehouses or both, are going to be allowed either in the ED, the Economic Development Zone District, or in the M1 Industrial Zoning District or both, so based upon those items, the board basically declared its ordinance invalid as to those areas, and that the board intends to enact within 180 days of September 28, an ordinance correcting these deficiencies and/or invalidities, and that is what this resolution does. So if you recall, in the Water Gap Capital Partners Matter, it was the landowner who requested that there be a curative amendment filed because the ordinance was deficient in some areas. This is basically the same thing, but it is now by the land, or not by the landowners, by the township. So this is a municipal curative amendment that is going to be worked upon, and this resolution confirms that decision by the board, because under the Municipalities Planning Code, within 30 days of the board declaring the ordinance either deficient or invalid, you have to enact a resolution or adopt the resolution, since it was September 28 was the date of that meeting, we're working on the 30 days, so it has to be adopted this evening, because you will have no other meeting before the 30 days expire.
Ron, from what you're saying, I'm assuming that even though in our zoning code now, what is allowed in the ED zone is pretty much duplicated in the M1 zone, so defining these two things, we could separate them and say, this is, this is in one zone, but not in the other.
You, you can do whatever you believe is appropriate, that's the whole point behind filing this resolution, because you're saying it may be a bit ambiguous as to areas, it might be a bit vague, let's make sure this is clear, so that people who want to do warehousing, they know what the warehousing is, how big, how small, and all the other indicia of it, and where it can be, and likewise for solar. So yes, that, that's what you're doing, you're basically saying we're going to. So yes, that's what you're doing. You're basically saying we're going to make this clear. So it's not it, you know, not confusing in solar especially because as far as I remember looking at order, that's although it's this thing and I can't say I've read every page. I don't think there's any ordered provisions for solar. And I don't think there's any definition.
Just a single mention.
And I don't know if it's even mentioned in any of the uses.
John, in regards to solar, if we're, let's say, going to allow rooftop solar, even rooftop on warehouses or something, do we need to have some provision in the building code? Standards for that we have to do.
I'm sure if you're going to put a load on the roof, yes. I'm not that familiar with the building code, but the solar panels are going to add an additional load that I don't think the code would normally take under consideration.
Well, anyone else have any questions? I think this is a great move and it's going to help us, you know, shape the character of the township and prevent, you know, more blight in the future. So.
And Mr. Chair, just remember the hundred and eighty days runs from September twenty eighth, not today.
Right.
The MPC, once you start the process, and the process began by your vote on September twenty eighth to declare the ordinance invalid, that's when a hundred and eighty days starts. So again, we need to make sure we don't run afoul of that deadline. And also remember under the MPC, and I have to double check again, once we go to this and do this, I don't believe you can go back to this well for another three years or something like that.
Correct. So that said, do I hear a motion that we adopt resolution number five ten?
I'll make the motion if we adopt the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Levinheim. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Barrett. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Just before we get to the the next item, I see some folks that I think are interested in the Black Buffalo situation are here. So I just want to make sure that they they are aware that the hearing tonight is canceled. The applicant has given a waiver on all time deadlines until at least February for the conditional use of land development plan. They did not respond to the conservation district with regard to their NPDES permit. Therefore, that was automatically correct, thrown out. So they're going to have to resume this process at a later date. So that that'll be, you know, if they submit something, great. If not, that waiver runs out and then we proceed with denial. So that's that's where they're at at this moment. Sure, go ahead. I I you'd have to be more specific about what's being, because there is the work that being done at the other part of the site, which is bygone. And they do have permits for that. But anything at Black Buffalo beyond the permits that would have been issued for that additional building, the the brick building that was finished before, I'm unaware of anything else with that. Yes. Correct.
Right.
Correct. It's regularly visited. So we can, I think Julia sent an email, which you both should be on the list for. So you may not have seen it yet, but.
Yeah, I ran something email out at the end of the day yesterday. I didn't see it until this morning, about ten minutes before we went into our budget meeting. So I don't believe the email actually got sent by myself until about one o'clock, warning everyone. So I apologize if you came all the way here without seeing that. But it was just very short notice that we got from them. So we did our best to let everybody know as fast.
Sure. No, absolutely. I mean, we try to stay on top of that. As soon as we get new stuff, we add it. Ron, they are going to be at the planning commission meeting though, potentially.
Know that.
Right.
The letter came from their lawyer yesterday or the day before saying, remove the conditional use hearing. We'll let you know when we want to back on.
Right.
And they waived all the appropriate hearing deadlines because under the law, there's certain deadlines when the township passed the act or the plan is being approved. Now, that's a conditional use. That's something different than the land development.
Right.
Of the land development, but it's different. Land development, they waived until the beginning of February.
Right.
I don't know. Again, that's what the lawyer's letter said. Did not indicate why, did not give any reasons on either item. He just said, we're waived to February. So it will be on the planning commission agenda for review. But if a revised plan is not filed, I'm not sure how much they're going to review, let's say, at the November meeting.
Right.
Because they've already reviewed it. Now, if a revised plan is filed, and John has to then look at the revised plan and and and, you know, add to it, well, then there'll be some review. But right now, unless a revised plan is filed, we'll be on the agenda because we never want to lose these things.
Right.
But I I don't see there being any action at the time unless something changes. And again, it'll be like, just like today, get the letter one or two days before, then we have to react. So.
Right. So we'll keep you in the loop as soon as we learn something new. Sure. I'm happy to contact the conservation district to to see if they have any of that information, but. Potentially. I'll reach out to them and I'll make sure I copy you so you can see what their response will be. But otherwise, we don't traditionally handle all of that ourselves. Every once in a while, it's it's a sewer authority or or water, but we can double check. Mm hmm. Thank you. Okay, that said, item E is the consideration for the award of the bid for Marshall's Falls. Phase one, we have Brian Smith here from Barry Ice. This is long day coming. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. So you may recall back in August, we had solicited bids in summer for phase one of Marshall Falls. I approved project and then received three valid bids, the lowest one was by coal ball construction. They provided a bid of nine hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents for the base bid. And then an alternate for the composite decking of initial twenty five thousand. So that would bring a bid of one million fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents. At the last meeting, the board asked for us and Julia to work together to, with both funding agencies, TCB and DCNR, and see if they would assist in combining as well as adding additional funds to cover the cost. We were successful in both agencies working with us. And so we have the funds now. It's one million twenty one thousand and change. So I present that to you, the board's night consideration in awarding the project, which then we would get organized with coal ball for a spring of twenty three.
That's exciting. A long time coming. And I appreciate all the work you did to combine the existing awards to make sure that we could do this. Hasn't been easy. Does anyone have any questions before I entertain a motion?
I have no questions. All I wanted to say is that I've met famous Barry Ice before, but now I have.
From from, yeah.
So we need a motion to accept the the bid.
A motion to accept the lowest responsible bidder of coal ball construction for their base bid plus the alternate for.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, Brian. Uh, Jacob.
Yes.
Can we go over the 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 amount of the bed? Bed.
Sure, I'll I'm in a second. Sure, I'm gonna I'm gonna second the motion though, so we can allow the discussion. So do you do we have offhand, Julia, the?
You want the other bids?
Sure, I I I think that would make them feel.
Okay, sure. So the the next bidder was from Hazelton Site. They provided a bid of one million two hundred and forty eight thousand eight hundred and forty two dollars and an alternate for the composite decking of an additional thousand dollars. And then James T. O'Hara was the third bidder. Their base bid was one million two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. And their alternate bid for the composite decking was an additional forty six thousand.
Where's the composite decking go?
It will go on the ADA accessible deck that's connecting.
Overlooks.
Yeah, correct.
Is there any other question? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. The eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next is a discussion with Nate.
Just I apologize for not knowing who you were, but the next individual, everyone knows.
That's right. Should we get you a shirt that says, everyone knows me, I'm Nate? Nate Oilers here to talk to us with regard to a potential multimodal grants for realignment or realignment of four forty seven and Franklin Hill Road, their intersection there. So Nate, take it away.
Thank you for the introduction. Brian, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. How you doing?
I'm doing fine, thank you. So I have a board here, which, Brian, you're not going to be able to see. But it shows the alignment of the existing four forty seven and Franklin Hill Road now. As you know, that comes out to like a Y intersection. There's been planning over the years to realign that to come out with Franklin Hill Lane, which is the stub that goes back to the school. We would actually see right of ways laid out many years ago that don't really seem to match the current anticipated alignment. But the goal is to submit a multimodal grant to Penn Dot to cover the cost of construction for that project. It's estimated at over a million dollars. I'm here representing Dr. Khan, who is the property owner on both sides of the realignment of Franklin Hill Road. His interest is he's looking to develop the property. And it's really not, there's no appropriate way to develop that property, have appropriate access without realigning this, the line of Franklin Hill, so that it comes down to traffic light. So that's his interest in this process. Our challenge is that the grant is due on November fourteenth. So there is a time constraint here. Dr. Khan has hired a grant consultant who's willing to assist with the preparation of the grant. He has a traffic engineer, Pete Terry of Benchmark Engineering, who's prepared cost estimates and the sketch. And I think all we're here asking tonight is if the supervisors would consider cooperating on doing the research over the next two weeks for the grant application, so we could get you all the information you need to hopefully confirm that you wanted to pass a resolution to apply for this grant at your November ninth meeting, which would meet the deadline for the for the grant application.
Mr. Rowley, what's that date again for the application, November twelve?
November fourteenth is the fourth.
Thank you. Hey, what would our liability be in this whatever across?
As part of the grant, there's a thirty percent match to the to the multimodal, the Penn Dot funding. And Dr. Khan has committed to assist the township in meeting that goal. We can keep up. Dr. Khan couldn't be here. He's out of the country tonight. He will be available. We can work out the details of that. That's obviously an important part of the getting moving the grant forward. We realize that.
Well, there there are two questions I really have.
Yes.
One is, which I've discussed with Dr. Khan, but he was, you know, about to step on a plane when I talked. What he means by assistance, or as he said to me, I'll guarantee this, but I don't know exactly what that means. And then the other thing is the reason for this, from his point of view, is to develop his property. It's, you know, large triangular area.
This this property here is the.
But we haven't even gotten to the stage of of seeing a sketch plan on that yet. So it's a long way to go. And now let's say the English saying, many have slipped, twitched the cuff in the lip. We don't know.
Those those are fair comments. So let me say that what guarantee means, we'll work that out with Dr. Khan before the next meeting because you need to understand that. I I'm clear. There will be some property that needs to be dedicated for this. I'm thinking that might go for for part of the match. There is engineering that needs to go part toward it. But ultimately, there needs to be thirty percent to match the grant. And we understand that that needs to be addressed by Dr. Khan. And in the next two weeks, we'll have those details together and and be prepared to present that at your next meeting. So you have a clear a clear direction on that. We understand how critical that is. Relative to the site itself, we've been working on that. We do it just based submitting a sketch plan. I mean, it's it's related, the the grant itself is just totally related to the Penn Dot improvements. But obviously, it's related to this project indirectly. One of the reasons for getting the grant is it does allow for economic development. We will submit our goals to submit a sketch plan for your next planning commission meeting to go through what the proposal is. In formal discussion, the planning commission at this point, we may go from there and press the formal sketch plan review for the following meeting. So we are moving on as well.
I guess.
The challenge is it takes a year to get a Penn Dot permit. You know, all these things, if we wait, you know, it just takes so long to get all these things. They really have to kind of move concurrently. I understand your concern about if the project doesn't proceed, and I'm sure there, you know, I suppose that if you would have, the grant would be awarded in April, I guess. You know, so I I think there would be some time to to work out those those issues.
Nate, it's Brian. You say thirty percent for the municipality?
Thirty percent, yes. So however that comes from other grants, from other contributions. But yes, the responsibility ultimately, the grant is issued to the municipality, it's my understanding, it would ultimately come, you know, municipality responsible to get that thirty percent together.
Okay. And it's going to be economic development, right? That'll be that'll be the the driving force.
Well, that and just the safety, as you know, that intersection, you know, just, you know, really needs to be improved for everyone's use there. Bring that out.
We all know that, right? Yep.
So it's a it's a public safety issue. It's economic development. It's it's a combination of of items.
As you say, we don't know the nature of Dr. Khan's commitment here. But let's say he he was loaning us the money, hoping we'd get a grant to cover it. I know we ran into on Marshall's Falls problem. He said, if we were loaned, if we money we can't, but then we'll apply for a grant.
That I think that I I don't know that that's my understanding. Well, will that Dr. Khan, I will express your concern about that.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't I don't want to see the township subsidize private development. I mean, the the zoning is already incredibly generous. That said, it is a safety issue, but I would like, I mean, I I I don't mind cooperating to figure out the information. I would just like to see that that we're going to be covered because, you know, we always talk about the but for clauses. This wouldn't need to be done but for the development there.
Well, it's a benefit to do it regardless, but.
You're right.
I understand your concern, and I think that that's an important clarification that we need to get to the township as to what that guarantee, that commitment means. And we understand.
All right. What what I might suggest, the township, they consider, does have to be seen. But no different than in a regular development, land development project. You require the developer to post performance security, whether by letter of credit, whether by escrow account cash, or whether by surety bond. So if he posts either of those items for this project, we're then protected. No.
Right.
Different than you.
I just don't want to see the taxpayer incur liability for it.
Well, no, again, you you would be proposing that. And you're right, you don't want to be spending taxpayer money for private improvement. But from my understanding of this intersection, it's it's, you know, it could be a bit dangerous.
It is dangerous.
Whether he builds or not, whether he bruises property or not, it would make sense to straighten out this intersection for safety purposes, et cetera. And if he's posting security for that, like the guarantee.
I got no problem.
Levinheim talks about, now that I think the township would be covered, but we can discuss that later.
I mean, I have no issue looking into it.
I think that's all we're asking for tonight. We don't have all the information. As I said, the only reason we're trying to get this is that there's this deadline.
Sure.
Which is the deadline, November?
November fourteenth. So my understanding, what the township, we we need from the township is ultimately a resolution on the ninth, you know, confirming that you're, you know, applying for the application. Notification of the county advising them of the of the grant. Some financial statements are required for the. Some financial statements or requirements for the, as a grant application, a sign worker protection form. We'll get that to you. And then a planning letter, so I think we're submitting the sketch plan to the planning commission, I think the meeting is on the tenth. And I think all we're going to be looking for there is that unrelated to this project, that this could, to revise the design of this intersection for public safety and, you know, potential economic development is consistently the comprehensive. But it has nothing to do with any plan to the project, just saying that from the comprehensive plan, that makes sense.
And, and, and this is not meant to like throw water on the project, though, or dampen the project, but understand that the resolution is being asked to do on November nine, which is the day before the planning commission meeting.
Right, well, you could notify them ahead of time, I mean, did, I mean, ultimately, that's what's going to happen after this meeting, right? I mean, it's not like, not like Nate's going to show up and say, hey, guys, check this out.
Well, they can always schedule a public meeting, all you need to do is give twenty four hours notice.
I think the submission deadline for the expanding commission, just for to get on the agenda, is Monday. I'm, I'm not sure.
Fairly close. That's enough time.
Make our submission, we'd have one for a sketch plan of the project and another just related to the intersection improvements. I think it's a fairly certain that, you know, it's really, can't see how your comprehensive plan would not encourage the.
Yeah.
Safety improvement, but I understand the timing, so.
Sounds reasonable.
A resolution can be conditioned and then signed the next day. We leave that up to everyone's creative thoughts.
Sure.
If you can make it conditional, then you could have that assurance and you wouldn't be, I understand, making decisions related.
Sounds.
So I think all we're asking for is cooperation, work with your staff to get the application together, get you all the information. I will relay to Dr. Khan that he should make a clear proposal on the thirty percent and is what he means by guarantee on that. And get that to you as soon as possible and have everything together for your consideration on the ninth.
Um, reasonable, Ron, John?
Nate, Brian Barrett again, please let Dr. Khan know that the, the guarantee should be done as soon as possible so that we could get, move on it.
Thank you for joining us. Sounds good to me.
Take care.
Okay. Next is the Board of Supervisors report. I don't have anything specific to comment on, although I would say I appreciate everyone's hard work going into today's meeting with regard to Marshall's Falls. And I look forward to issuing the notice to proceed.
Yeah, that's a good move. Jacob, can we address the pain, pain and how they pay, so that we could put that on our agenda? If, do we have to do that?
Sure, yeah, I, yeah, I, I spoke with, with Lois today, I, I don't think that we have any problem formalizing that at our, our next meeting, but I think that, that we should do it, you know, this year, and, and I, I don't think there's any issue with that.
That's great, I'm sure she appreciates it.
Oh, yeah, she was happy. Yeah, of course.
Yep, cold but happy.
Robert, anything to? No, okay.
Go back to consent agenda or?
No, we already voted on the consent agenda, we're, we're going to bills now, yes. Going to bills.
What did we vote for?
Pay the bills.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
I really missed that.
You made, I think you made the motion on that, Robert.
He didn't want to see it.
Just to clarify, Brian Barrett motion to approve the consent agenda, Robert Levinheim seconded, no public comment, all in favor of motion, Carrie.
Okay, perfect. Great, so next is our bills. We have two hundred and thirty four thousand, one hundred and fifty seven dollars and forty seven cents, which includes engineering, utility, legal bills as well as healthcare, various other small recurring expenses. And then we also have in there one payroll. So basically the, you know, expenses from August through September in some cases. So do I hear a motion, we pay the bills?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Levinheim. Second by Mr. Barrett.
That motion.
Second by Mr. Barrett, any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, next is public comments. Any public comments this evening? Tim? Correct, there was no personnel swapped for today. I mean, that, that there's no plan to, but, but it was not done. Correct. Correct.
And just out of curiosity, how long you're doing?
I don't know the exact period of time, I could ask one of the crew members. Yeah. Sure, I mean, there's a ton everywhere. Yeah, they're going to be by at least once a week. Potentially, but, you know. Happens, all right. Any other comments? One last one, Tim.
Jacob, ever comment?
Sure.
Uh, I just, in the news this evening, there are several North Eastern states that are going to ration fuel, heating oil. Uh, just maybe something we could keep an eye on. Not that it's a V A, not P A yet, but I think it's New Orleans and maybe in New York. Whatever that means.
Sure.
Going to be a hell of a winter.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, we can cut down some of those ash trees and burn them.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
They are, they're good, good fuel.
All right, do we hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Who, was that Martha, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Martha.
I typed a chat, but I, sometimes my sound doesn't work, I'm sorry, I had a prior commitment and I just joined. I wondered if you could just briefly update me as to what happened with the Black Buffalo conditional use hearing.
Sure, so the, it was tabled, or not tabled, they sent us waivers for both the land development and the conditional use processes. They do not have a, you know, current responses to certain letters with the conservation district. And they will have to let us know when they would want to be re-reviewed. For now, the land development is waived through February, and we do not have any new information from them. So as soon as we would get new information, then we could potentially have a hearing. But if, if the waivers expire, then, then we pursue denial based on the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay, got you, thank you so much, sorry I missed that.
No, that's okay, we're going to update the website with some of that stuff tomorrow, because we just got some of it last night, and so the new documents will go on there too.
Martha, this is Ron speaking, and I just wanted to let you know that we received a letter either yesterday or the day before from Black Buffalo's attorney requesting that the conditional use hearing be taken off for tonight. And they will let us know when they want to put it back on, so, and they waived all the timeframes with respect to that, so. That's why it did not yet track to the, either website or other thing, because we just got that notice of they are too adult.
Yeah, no, no worries, I kind of figured that would happen.
Also note that the executive who was supposedly running this whole operation doesn't seem to be with the company any longer.
Correct.
Oh, we don't know what's going on with Black Buffalo.
Interesting. Okay, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
You should remember my request for a brief executive session.
Sure, after this meeting, we'll enter executive session, so we'll have to take up the room. So Brian, make sure you stay on, on the line for that, and then I'll, I'll, I'll end the, the stream, that way we can have our executive session. Okay, all right. That said, Robert, did you make a motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Levinheim, second by Mr. Barrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned six forty eight, thank you very much, everybody.
Chair, with your permission, I just want to. Let's firm it, I'll be right back.
Sure, I will.
Good to see you.
Yeah.